Okay, well, thank you very much. Good afternoon, everyone. And prior to commencing the meeting, I'd like to begin by acknowledging the traditional territories of the Coast Salish peoples. And in particular, acknowledge our relationships with the Katsi, the Quantlin, the Semiamo, and the Masque First Nations. With that, I will bring the regular meeting of Township of Langley Council to order. And the first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Could I have a motion, please?
So move Ferguson.
Arneson moves it. Counsel Ferguson seconds it. All those in favor, opposed and carried. Thank you. And we want to adoption in minutes of the regular council meeting of March twenty second. Could I have a motion, please?
So Ferguson, so move.
Counsel Ferguson moves it. Seconder.
Long.
Counselor Long, any errors or omissions? See none, I'll call a question. All those in favor and opposed, and that carries. Thank you. First up on our agenda is delegations, and we have Mr. A.J. Gill, who will be here to present to council. So I'll turn it over to staff. Mr. Gill, you have five minutes to present, and welcome here.
Hi there. I'm sorry, guys. I'm just a little bit busy now. I'm just gonna try to multitask. Couldn't get away from work. I'll keep it short and sweet. We're going to spot seventy-four. Um, I'm gonna be a new resident of the Township of Langley, looking real forward to it, moving in from Surrey. I'm gonna be moving into the Brookswood area in the new development that's going into the Havenwood. And just basically, I just wanted, I wanted counsel to just, just, just think about my idea and, um, and just see what, see what you guys think about it. Basically, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm proposing is that the city look at developing more park and outdoor recreation places for, for families to enjoy and kids to play in. And right now, I'm beside our property. I have an address. The address is one nine seven two zero thirty-two Ave. I see that the individuals there are, that, that, that's a private property, but they're using some part of that property for a dog park. It's nicely molded. They're using it, and it's really good. People, I see people getting, getting together and, um, doing social distancing, dog training, I guess. And I'm just hoping that moving forward as the city develops, that we can look, we can develop more places like that, and maybe even look into developing that into a, a city property that everybody can enjoy.
Great, well, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just talking real fast, but I gotta get back to work. If there's any other questions, or if I can help in any way in the future, I'd, I'd love to be a part of anything.
All right, I appreciate it. Welcome to, uh, welcome to the Township of Langley, and I can assure you that through our neighborhood planning process, and there are parks being planned for that area, certainly could get, have staff forward you the, um, the official community plan for that area. I'll give you a sense of where the parks are gonna go, but certainly hearing from you is, is helpful because we are looking to, and, and I guess one of the things, you're, you're one of the newer ones, you know, in those new developments. So being the first one in, usually takes some time for us to develop all of the amenities that, that will be coming to that area. But we certainly appreciate your input and look forward to you helping on. You can always look at getting involved in some of our committees and that sort of thing. The Counselor Richter has a question for you, if you don't mind.
Um, yes, thank you very much, Mr. Gill, and I echo the mayor's, the mayor's welcome to the township. The address that you referenced, this one nine seven two zero thirty-second Avenue, is that a property that you are asking us to buy for park purposes?
Yes, it, it would be a wonderful property to buy. It's a part of it, or, or not even buy, like, I'm not, I'm not asking council to do anything, really. I'm just want, want to propose the idea so it's on your guys', um, this horizons. And I, I, I don't know how, uh, any of the process works, but I do see that individuals are already starting to use that property for, uh, um, it looks like a dog park. And, um, and I, I see like right in front of us, there's another development going on called Brookswood Mills. I see on the corner of two hundred and thirty-two, there's townhouses proposed. Well, it's just high-density area. And for, as a community to come together, um, in outdoor spaces, I feel like our, our bond will increase.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you. We'll let you go back to work. Thank you very much for presenting.
Thank you very much for having me, and it was a pleasure. Bye.
Take care. All right, so now we move on to reports to council, and E one is the, is a UBCM Strengthening Community Services Program. And this is a grant application, and this, um, grant would be one that, uh, that municipality would apply for. But as you can tell from the report, it would be, it would be administered through various organizations within our community, but it has to come through the municipality. So I would, um, I, if there's any questions, I see two hands up, so questions on the report first, then we'll ask for a motion. Counselor Richter, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, actually three questions here pertaining to the chart that is on page three. So my first question is, does it really cost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to put one bylaw officer out on the road? I mean, that's what we pay to put a police officer out on the road. So that's question number one. Question number two, uh, towards the bottom of the chart, there's a, a line item there for training and capacity building for township staff for sixty-two thousand dollars. I'd like to know exactly what that training and capacity development is. And question number three, the two point five million, um, are we going to be able to stick to this over the course of a year? Or will there be a cost overrun that we're anticipating? So thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Backen, I'm just seeing if maybe you can direct to the staff or if you can answer those. Mr. Seffi?
Uh, thank you, your worship. I have Mr. Ward with me as well, in case there are questions that I cannot answer myself. In reverse order, your worship, no, there are no, uh, no overruns that we're anticipating. In fact, the requirement is for all of the costs, including, uh, any in-kind, if you will, staff resource costs to be covered by, by the grant. Uh, the second part of that, I guess the second question regarding, uh, training and capacity, capacity building that relates to, Mr. Ward?
Crisis Intervention and De-escalation Training for Bylaw Enforcement, Park Ranger, and Fire Department Staff, Trauma-Informed Practice, Housing First, Harm Deduction Principle Training for Bylaw Enforcement and Park Ranger Staff, and Cultural Safety Training for Bylaw Enforcement, Park Ranger Staff, with optional space for members of councils.
I'm not sure if you were able to hear that, your worship, or not. Hopefully you were.
Yes.
And then the, uh, the first question that was asked by Counselor Richter, uh, the cost, or the, the, I guess the cost, yeah, that's the correct way of putting it. The cost, uh, for an additional bylaw enforcement officer for a temporary period of one year includes a vehicle. That is, uh, I guess, not the majority portion, but certainly a great portion of that cost is, is related to the vehicle and the operating of, of a vehicle. Uh, so that's what it boils down to.
Okay, so that vehicle, do we not have extra vehicles in our fleet that these temporary officers could use? Or are we buying brand-new vehicles for them that we will retain after the fact?
It would be neither, uh, your worship, it would be a rental or lease arrangement. We do not have any vehicles that are spared that could be used by, by, uh, another officer for any purpose. And we do not plan on buying it for the purpose of, of future needs. So this will be a, a one-year temporary lease process.
Okay, so going back then to the costs of two point five million, if we manage to go through those costs in three quarters of a year, will the program shut down in three quarters of a year, or will we have to finance it for the remaining quarter here?
Uh, thank you for the question, your worship. The, the, uh, program cannot run any more than one year. But it doesn't, doesn't mean that it cannot be terminated or concluded, uh, within the one year. So if, if the objectives have, have been accomplished within, uh, say, ten months or nine months, then that would be the end of the program.
Yeah, no, I, my concern is about the costs. Um, and, and my concern is that we're gonna get a two point five, hopefully a two point five million dollar grant out of this that should cover us for a whole year of services. But if it doesn't, what happens then? Do we shut the program down, or do we finance the differential?
Uh, well, your worship, the intent is to design a program with the assistance and, and lead, if you will, of a nonprofit, uh, service provider that will then fit the funding that's available. So it is not going to, uh, result in any cost overruns. Uh, I guess if there are any unaccountable costs, it will be foreseen and avoided. So the intent will be to not incur or put, put the program or the, uh, the situation in a way that there might be a cost overrun.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Kunst?
Yeah, my question, um, so we're gonna do this for a year. Um, so I have a question around, uh, temporary shelter and housing and how that's gonna work. Are we working together with the province on, on that piece? Because as we know, that there are, um, people who are experiencing homelessness that are in temporary shelters right now. Um, so I'm just trying to understand what happens after a year when we have provided all of these services. And then, um, uh, do we, we're not gonna just drop these people off the, off of what the services that we're providing. So what happens after a year? So, um, just a question to staff. Thank you.
Uh, your worship, thank you again for the question. Uh, the intent is for the, the nonprofit organization that, subject to council approval, will be seeking, I guess, collaboration with as part of the expression of interest process. The intent is for them to collaborate closely with the province of British Columbia, with the intent of providing, uh, if needed, if that's in fact found out to be or identified as, as being in need, uh, temporary shelter in existing facilities such as existing, uh, you know, hotels and, and other areas, other accommodations. And then for the province to then carry on in the future and, and build on this, this one-year, uh, pilot, if you will, uh, in order to establish and determine what might be the needs, uh, in the long term.
Okay, all right. So I think that might answer my question. Um, yeah, I'll leave it. There's a few more, but I'll leave it for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, quite a few of my answers have been given by staff. I did wanna say that, um, you know, there's a number of groups and organizations that do involve, the criteria Salvation Army, Stepping Stones, and a few other groups and organizations. Uh, if I may, through the chair to staff, is there an application or screening process that we'll go through, uh, knowing the, there is, knowing the governing policy of the, of the provincial government or UBCM?
Yes, indeed, your worship. The, uh, the expression of interest process will, is intended to deal with those, those matters to make sure that it's actually the best service provider ideally suited to, to meet the needs of this grant structure to, to deliver the program. That is the intent.
Yeah, because as we know, Stepping Stones and Salvation Army, perhaps others are already doing something, and it might be a, a kind of an easy transition for them. It'll be up to them to apply, of course. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, so at this point, I'd ask for a motion, uh, to authorize staff to submit the grant. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel, uh, Kunst, and second my Counsel, Arneson. Uh, any further discussion? Call a question. All those in favor, opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you. We want to E two, and this is Liquor License Amendment, application number fifty-four. It's the main de Shaberton Estate on two sixteen Street. And, uh, if we have a motion.
So moved.
To consider, endorse, or a motion to adopt, I'm sorry, endorsing, to endorse it. So it's motion to endorse that, correct? Thank you. And second my Counselor Kunst, Counselor Richter?
Yeah, I just had a question. It looks from the diagram, um, on page five, that, uh, this is basically going into the back of the Bacchus Bistro there, and there is already a patio there. So I'm just wondering, um, what the major difference is. Is it the number of seats that are being requested?
Mr. Seffi?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Yes, uh, I was just going to share the screen so we can, we can all take a look at the, uh, the map that Counsel Richter's referenced, if that's okay, your worship.
Yes, please.
Was she able to see this, the subject site?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I was referring actually to the diagram, the site plan.
Yep, I'm just getting to the calendar. Uh, so this is the, this is the diagram that you're referencing?
Yes, and that area, that patio area that's there is already there, if that's the Bacchus Bistro, which I believe it is.
That area may already exist, your worship, but it's not, it's not licensed to, to be used for serving, uh, of alcohol. The intent of this endorsement is to, to increase the capacity, the person capacity, capacity loading, if you will, from sixty-five to a hundred and twenty, or sixty to a hundred and twenty-five, I apologize, from sixty to a hundred and twenty-five, uh, which includes the, the subject area that was referenced, which is shown here in red, the proposed patio. So if it currently exists, it is not in a form that can be used for, uh, serving of, of alcoholic beverages to patrons.
Okay, well, I've been out on that patio, and I have had a glass of wine there. So I'm assuming maybe what they're looking at is making the patio bigger, perhaps. But there is a patio there right now. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel Arneson?
Um, thank you, your worship. Um, I had a question through you to staff, and just to go to some of the details. I think it's good to keep this rendering up for the moment. Um, so reading through the report, there's approximately a hundred and fifty seat special event area, and the staff report says that they received approval for that in twenty eighteen. And so that's an area there. What I'm wondering further to sort of the cumulative effect of allowing more and more use on the property, is there, does, uh, is staff aware of any capacity, like maximum capacity, that's allowed or considered for a rural winery venue? Because I, I don't know what that looks like. I can see how it compares to others, but I don't know if there's an absolute maximum or cap that we've ever considered in the township. That's my question.
Your worship, staff isn't aware of any, any caps, uh, from either a, a municipal land use perspective nor the provincial licensing perspective? Uh, it is typically a function of the, the sites, the, the building and the facilities on the site, and, uh, what may be possible within those parameters.
Okay, uh, because my second question then has to do with that in a different way. It's about the parking. So it says in the staff report that there are currently ninety-five parking spots. So if we're gonna basically double the capacity for this patio, are there any further requirements for parking? I didn't see any noted in the staff report.
So, your worship, the zoning bylaw stipulates parking requirements based on the, the uses that are permitted on the site. And in this particular case, the zoning bylaw requirements are not only met but also exceeded. Uh, the requirements in accordance with the zoning bylaw are sixty-seven parking stalls. And as Counselor Arneson referenced, the applicant is proposing ninety-five parking stalls, as you can see on the screen, including the, uh, the, the area to the south of the property, along this, uh, southern area, as well as the angled parking along the building, here along the face of the building. So altogether ninety-five, uh, which is some thirty stalls in excess of the zoning bylaw requirements.
Uh, thank you. Just one final comment. I did notice that there was some feedback, um, given from the neighbors having to do with their opinion about that. So just to take that into account, that that is part of our process for engagement, that we wish to hear from the neighbors before we make a decision one way or another. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Long?
Thanks, your worship. It, it is confusing because I've been there too and had a glass of wine on the patio. So I am very confused as to what's happening, but I imagine perhaps they're making it more permanent. But it's difficult for me to, uh, to make a decision when I'm, I'm quite confused, as Counselor Richter mentioned. I'm sure that patio has existed for years. Um, maybe I shouldn't, uh, I shouldn't say I had a glass of wine. It was water. I can't remember now. But, um, I do wanna address the concerns for the, for the, uh, submissions that we received. So there was, um, a concern about, uh, lighting at least, and that's something we, can we address that in this application? That, that they review their lighting to make sure that it doesn't, uh, you know, emit from the building and is a bit more contained using, uh, lighting that's, uh, that points down rather than out?
Yeah, I, Mr. Seffi, I, I think, uh, based certainly those comments can be, um, relayed on. But this patio is in the back. I think it's been used. Maybe it's not been used as a liquor, um, primary patio, but certainly for food. And it may be the occasion, the glass of wine was served out there. I don't, I don't know.
Well.
But the lighting probably isn't gonna change much from what's already in existence. I don't think they're adding any, they're not adding a physical space. Physical space is already there.
Well, can we make sure that the lighting is addressed? And of course, there was a, a concern about the noise too. I don't know if, if they can take whatever. And we get this with every application. They do their very best to mitigate, uh, any noise emitting. I know they mentioned the application, but, but I would like to have those two concerns noted, lighting and, and noise.
Mr. Seffi, if you could note that for, if this is successful to pass it on to the proponent. Thank you. Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, again, there, there, there were comments, uh, by other council members regarding submissions we received today, uh, in our package. Um, there was a, uh, a concern, as, as, uh, other members have mentioned regarding noise. There's also a concern around traffic, and, uh, there's still a lot of, um, from folk from the horse community that still have horses that, you know, go up and down the, the street, and I guess they're headed to the park as well. I mean, the park's not very far away. I'm talking about Campbell Valley Park. My question to them, to staff, would be, uh, is there such a thing when we go with this, another zoning? Not just this, it's like a kind of a good neighbor policy or a good neighbor handshake agreement or suggestion that, um, the, uh, the owners of these type of establishments, uh, try to educate those coming back and forth to the country area and to take care while driving and, uh, those kind of things? If I may, through the chair, is there any kind of, uh, suggestion when we're going through the application process?
Mr. Seffi?
Yes, your worship, the, uh, the expectations that, that we have beyond bylaws and beyond policies and procedures that include good neighbor, I guess, we, we, uh, staff attempts to, I guess, cover those as best as staff can as part of the, uh, the approval process. In this particular case, your worship, I am not sure, I have not personally been to the site. I am not sure if, if this application actually triggers a billing permit or not. Once, assuming council endorses it and assuming that the, uh, the, the provincial liquor and cannabis regulating ban grants the, uh, the application or the license, whether that will then trigger a, a billing permit or not, I am not sure. But typically, that is a time that staff go over, go over certain issues. In this case, uh, staff can certainly make a point of the points that were raised earlier, your worship, as you identified, uh, to raise with the applicant and make sure that, that they respect those and, and the, uh, the privacy and, and the peace and tranquility of the neighbors.
Okay, so, uh, okay, that's good. Now, is there such a thing that, no, do we have signs up on, say, horses or animals on the road? I know, I remember a while ago, is that something we have on a sub-regular basis?
We do have some signs at some locations, your worship, yes.
Because it might be something that you could suggest to the staff or the applicant in a, in a kind of a handshake agreement that they might wanna sponsor some signs or work with the township to erect some signs in the area about horses, hare, and those kind of things, because I'm sure the horse community would be appreciative of that. It's all about educating, and, and the farming community as well, educating people about agricultural uses in the area. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kunst?
Yeah, um, so, uh, through your worship to staff, um, would they be able to host a hundred and fifty-person event, um, at the same time as a, as their, have their bistro or their patio open as well?
Your worship, that sounds like, uh, a question of a potential special event. I guess it is possible the applicant could apply for a special event, uh, and then go through the process and, and obtain, uh, an approval for, uh, the service of, of liquor as well as any other sort of municipal regulatory requirements such as noise and all that kind of thing, as part of a high-dose permit and, and other bylaw exemption processes. And, and would be subject to review on its own, on its own merits.
I see. So, 'cause I think, um, after reading some of the comments from the neighbors, that parking, that people are parking on the road, um, which is, you know, super dangerous if you are, you know, got your, your horse and your, you know, um, so what, what are, what are some of the things that they can do just to make sure that, you know, people aren't parking on the road if they do have a big event? And I don't know how often that happens, and I've only been to the, the, to buy my wine there. I've only been to the bistro once, which is a long time ago. So I can't quite picture, um, the space there. But, um, yeah, is there something they can do to make sure that people aren't parking on the street?
Yes, certainly, your worship. In, in addition to the points that were raised earlier, we can have a conversation with the applicant to, uh, either put signs up on the fence front of the, the property on two sixteen to make sure that enough of the patrons park on the shoulder, which is actually not permitted, uh, even during special events. Uh, and, 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 and if they expect, uh, I guess it doesn't need to be addressed at this point because if they do have a special event that's gone through a process and has been approved, then part of the requirement would be for them to secure parking off the streets anyway. So it's really just in the existing circumstance, not a special event, that we would be wanting them to, to make sure that there is no parking on the street.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think that there have been some very good, uh, issues raised. And of course, as more wineries come in, and it's wonderful to have them as a part of our, um, industry base in the township. But we do have to be sensitive to the needs of the neighbors, uh, because of the rural setting that these are located in. So I would like to propose we defer this report to the next meeting so that staff can, uh, report back to us with additional information on whether the patio is being, the existing patio is being enlarged, 'cause that's not clear. Um, what will be done to ensure that the parking will be all located onsite and not on the roads? Um, lighting issues as well as noise. Like right now, the patio is attached to the bistro and food is served out there, and it's very quiet. It's a very pleasant environment. But if this is going to end up being some sort of a nightclub draw for young people, then that's not fair to the neighbors. So I'd like to move that, uh, deferral to the next meeting to get clarification on those three points, or four points, I should say.
Is there a seconder?
Uh, second.
Counselor Davis seconds. On the referral, um, you know, I, I haven't had my, you know, this, this, I've just been here for a long time. I think one of the first wineries in the Township of Langley. And, um, as they've grown, they've added new spaces. I recall the one that was on two sixteen Street. There's, uh, picnic tables out there and a little bit of a, uh, covered area, I think. And, uh, the, I haven't heard of any complaints or issues with what they've been doing. And the RCP, you know, this report have, uh, have not, uh, ex, you know, expressed any concerns with it. So I, I, you know, for myself, I think I have enough information to move forward on this. I, I think they, uh, what they're doing is, is in line with, with the area. So, uh, you know, I appreciate Counsel Richter's referral, but I, you know, uh, idea of moving it forward to get more information, but I think I have enough information. So I'm not gonna support the deferral, but if it happens, then that's what happens. Counselor Ferguson on the deferral?
Yes, from what I understand, it was, uh, Langley's first, uh, uh, winery. And the very first thing, question asked for them was, can you grow grapes in Langley? So that was the very first question. Now, the V O L A's, uh, and Inga, Inga V O L A, she, uh, was in our Rotary Club as well. So the V O L A's were very, uh, generous philanthropists in the area as well, and they, uh, built the Domain de Chaberton, uh, winery, and, um, it's certainly expanded significantly, but it, it's still a very, very nice place to visit. But, uh, I wanted to say to staff, as part of the referral, as something to consider, is, um, signage along the area and cooperating with, uh, with folks that, um, build these type of thing. Now, I don't, one, one quick question. I forgot to ask. Is there another winery going up next door to it, if I may, through the chair?
Mr. Seffi?
Uh, yeah, maybe, your worship. I'm not aware of one.
Okay, well, you can, you can research that for us as well. Though, now, if you could sit down with them, say, a, a, a good neighbor policy regarding rural roads, rural animals, horses, cows, uh, all, uh, all sorts of other things. But anyway, thank you. That's my point.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you very much. You know, I, I've only been there a few times and, and, um, um, they get half the rainfall. And I know this isn't, I should, I'm way off subject here, but they get half the rainfall than the city Langley does. They're on a southern slope. It's actually poorer soil, and it's a really good place to grow grapes. But I, if, if the next meeting's two weeks away, I kinda also was a little confused when it came to the patio, whether they, and I don't think it's gonna when it came to the patio, whether they, and I don't think it's going to be a problem. But I, you know, if it's just two weeks and we can get a few more answers, I'm sure that they would probably be really happy to answer those questions. And so now, you know, give us the information. Got, I'm, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to take two weeks and get that answer on exactly how big or what they're actually doing on that patio. Lighting and parking are, let them, let them crack out of that, but it's the size of the patio that did confuse me. And so I, let's do it right anyhow. So I'm going to support both. I'm going to support the project and, and the, and the amendment. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So on the deferral, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Kunst, my fellow is opposed. Kerry, thank you. Uh, move on to E three. This is budget transfer request, two oh two A Street, seventy seven hundred block uh, and to seventy nine hundred block. Uh, Mr. Seffy, could you just provide a little introduction to this first for counsel and then I'll ask for the motion?
Yes, certainly, your worship. The project itself, your worship, is, was included in the twenty twenty one uh, budget for council's consideration. It was approved, it hasn't approved. Uh, what staff is hoping to be able to do, your worship, is to uh, expand, if you will, the, the scope of, of the works such that we can do several things, such that we can reduce future costs or, or eliminate future costs if possible. Uh, reduce impact to the public in terms of coordinating as much of the work as we can while we're doing the roadworks. And as I said, thereby realizing some efficiencies in the costs. Specifically, your worship, we're looking at undergrounding or not undergrounding, but, but placing on the ground the, the ultimate storm and, and water mains. Uh, those were not anticipated previously and, and staff believes that given the availability, availability of funds in terms of D C Cs and other sources that staff have identified, those works can actually be included. And, and then we get the entire thing done to the ultimate standard. So as I said, it includes underground works, underground utilities, includes greenways, sidewalks, uh, as well as, uh, access points to both the school system as well as the Landly Event Center system, including signalization. So that is the, the intent of the, the, the report and the request to, to counsel, your worship. I do have a, a sketch that may be beneficial to counsel. It shows what has been completed in the past, your worship, in the previous years. Essentially, the area that you can see in pink, uh, seventy six avenue, the signalization of seventy six and two take, two, two A Street, uh, all the way up for a portion of the frontage of Ari Mountain. Uh, and then what we hope to be able to do as part of this project, this phase, your worship, is, is what's shown in the green, which is essentially the, the two main access points, the event center and to Peter Stewart School, Middle School, uh, to the ultimate standard, to the ultimate road perception, including, as I said, greenways that typically do not form part of the, the roadworks and underground utilities. And then the future phases will include the remainder section. Uh, we will try and do as much of the work as we possibly can within the budget envelope, but then it is anticipated that the section north of seventy nine avenue, all the way to eightieth and the frontage of, uh, as you can see there on, on eightieth on the south side, uh, fronting private property will have to be done in the futures, future, future phase, your worship.
Thank you for that. Uh, some questions for staff, Counsel Richter?
Um, yes, on page three of the report, there's a chart there that shows the breakout of where the monies are coming from. And I had two questions. The first one, the D C Cs, I mean, it makes sense to take money for this project out of the D C Cs. But the, the one that says road improvements, eightieth avenue from two hundred street to two oh one uh, block, the vast majority, like almost half the monies are coming out of that. So that, my question is, is that now going to leave us short for road improvement monies on eightieth avenue? And the second question is, there's fifty thousand coming out of council or corporate contingency. Um, what is corporate contingency? What is its purpose and how much is in it?
Seffy.
Uh, thank you, your worship. So in terms of the the road improvements, eightieth avenue from two hundred street to two oh one hundred block that was identified by Counsel Richter as being out of the table. And I can confirm, your worship, that that is a project that's already been completed and there is funding that has been uh, deemed to be surplus, that project. So it is not going to be, I guess, needed for, for other projects. If it's not used uh, in this area, uh, it will remain surplus and go back, I guess, to be used either at council's discretion for other uses or potentially for, for the next phase. So that is not something that's going to be taking away any work from other areas and it's in within the same area. So we, we thought that staff thought that it was a, a good source of providing funding. As far as the corporate contingency is, is concerning, your worship, where it's typically, I have no idea what's, what's left there. It may be Ms. Ralph or, or maybe Mr. Backen can, can comment on that. But it's typically projects that are unanticipated up to fifty thousand dollars that can be uh, undertaken at, at staff discretion for, for, I guess, as I said, projects that are deemed to be priority uh, that could either be an added scope to an existing project uh, or a separate project, independent project based on uh, the, the safety of public or based on other needs that may have, may have come to light.
And your worship, this document, as I recall, uh, it's been, the account's been around for quite some time, but I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as this is the twenty twenty one budget, that would probably leave us with a, a surplus or a remainder of about a hundred thousand dollars after utilizing these funds.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, just a question through you two staff. Um, are these items that had been identified to be done in a future budget? And due to efficiency, it makes sense to try and do it now? And if that's the case, would, um, would there be any returning of money to the budget to, in some way from subsequent years, or that would have a lowering of the budget expectations in future years? Because this is something we had planned for anyways. I don't know if that makes sense. I guess I'm just wondering if this was already a planned item in future budgets. That's probably the main question.
Well, your worship, maybe I can just respond in this way. Uh, this corridor has been identified, identified by council as a priority corridor uh, early in this current term. So what staff's been doing is actively trying to complete certain sections which include eighty S Avenue, two oh two A Street, uh, and you know, other, other corridors that, you know, include two oh eight street and, and others. So this actually certainly is in line with, with the direction of council in terms of completing certain roads or T D roads in the will of the area.
Right, okay. So these, these, these are not new projects that we've just come up with. This is something that's always been part of the plan. And it just makes, uh, it's makes good sense, efficient for efficiency reasons to do it now.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And Counsel Kunst.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm just happy to see that this is, is going to happen, especially as I read. Um, it could potentially be done by September twenty twenty one. Do, did I, is that, is that reasonable? Um, to, uh, through your worship to staff?
Mr. Seffy.
Uh, I'm sorry, I, I'm not sure if I understood your question. Is the question, are we going to be able to finish this in twenty twenty one?
Yes.
Yes, that's the intent, your worship. Subject to council approval, we plan to finish the work. Uh, we plan to go to tender immediately, beginning, say tomorrow, if, if we can, again, subject to council approval, start the tender process, allow that to, to conclude. Uh, typically, I don't know, four, six weeks and then start the, the construction uh, during the summer months and have the whole thing completed before the schools open back in September or future September.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the, there'd be a lot of very happy students and parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll look for a motion for E three. Could someone move the?
So moved, long.
Counsel Long with it, second by Counsel Ferguson. Uh, there's no further discussion. All those in favor and opposed, and that carries unanimously. Thank you. Move on to E four and Counsel Long, you provided a note to the clerk that you are in conflict for several items. So just to be clear, table A, item one, table D, item three, and table E two. Uh, is that correct? Counsel Long?
Yes, your worship. So the, the clerk had a couple of suggestions. I'm not sure which one he'd like to.
Yeah. So what I'll do is I'll move all the clauses except for those numbered, the one point one, which is the Aldergrove Agricultural Fair and Festival Association. And then, uh, item three, I just want to make sure we get these right. So that's why I'll take my time with this. Item three is the which one is that now?
Yeah, these are all the agricultural association grants. So the, there's the fair, uh, Canada Day and the, and the Santa Claus or the Christmas parade.
Christmas, okay. So for those, um, I'll move all of them except for those. And then we'll deal with those after then you are able to declare conflict if you wish at that point.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So moving, so, so the clerk is clear. Okay, so that's, so I'll move it. And is there a seconder? Counsel Arneson seconds. Uh, so discussion. Counsel Richter?
Yes, I'd like to divide each of them, please.
Is there a seconder? Counsel Woodward seconds. So just show of hands for division. All those in favor?
Well, your worship, what, what's the point of that? I mean, could we not just pull out the ones that have concern or, all right?
Well, we'll, we'll just go through each one then. Okay. And so then, uh, I'll call the question. All those in favor and opposed, Kerry, so it's divided. Okay, so we'll start. We'll start with report. I've got the report in front of me. So that means we go through each one of these. So number one. So start with number one. And so, uh, it'd be helpful rather than, we can go for questions on each one, but helpful if we'll kind of look through these things. Counsel Davis, did you have a question on number one? Counsel Long, did you have a question on number one?
No, not on number one.
I, I didn't have a, a question. I just had a clarification. If I'm worried that, um, that Counselor Long is, has a conflict of interest. Because I may have a conflict of interest for the Milner Association. We give them a grant. I, I actually sleep with the lady. It's on the board there too.
Then you can, when, when we get to that, you can declare conflict then. Yeah. When we get to that one, then you can declare.
I never have, I never have before, but I'm, I'm just wondering. Uh.
It's up to you.
It's dicey.
Yeah, but it's up to you. If you believe that there's, if, if in some way you're influenced by that, then it's totally up to you. And no one else can declare that for you. So.
Okay, okay. Thanks for your advice.
Thanks. Okay. So just on the one point oh. One point oh. So Counsel Long on the one point oh?
No, I'm, I'm leaving the hand up for later, so I don't know.
Okay, Counsel Woodward on the one point oh?
Yeah, thanks. So, um, I want to confirm, I guess, that this, this is the intent here. How many, how many events do staff think they're going to, applications they think they're going to see that are going to meet the criteria? That we find it to hold essentially what I'm assuming is a Zoom event. How many do we think there are going to be?
Is Mr. Tullamello, uh, here, Mr. Tullamello?
Through your worship, Counsel Lord Woodward. Could you repeat the question? I'm sorry, I had trouble hearing you.
Okay, uh, I just wanted to confirm the quantity of the events. Do you believe, uh, you know, whether it's in a report or not, I just want to state it for council's permission. Uh, how much the quantity of the events do you think that will qualify for essentially COVID events that are Zoom based? I'm assuming they are largely Zoom based.
I think that the combination of the virtual as well as the uh, physical event as related in the proposals by the organizations under this voter will meet the minimum requirements uh, and probably exceed the minimum requirements of numbers in attendance because both are presenting a physical and a virtual arrangement. Did that answer your question, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I think it did. So I mean, basically I was looking for it just to be two, right? We've, we've got two organizations that are planning on embarking on something like this. And this would be new. So, you know, I think this came up last year. For me, I, I, I wonder what the original intent of these event grants was for. Um, you know, I think there was some debate last year that it might be more than economic development. Maybe you can give me some of the history there again. Was the intent of, of providing a grant to an event to, to help an event that essentially, you know, needed the money to continue, like wasn't making a profit or didn't have significant funding from other levels of government. Uh, was it more economic development and to assist than in holding the event or am I wrong in this, in those assumptions?
No, no, you are correct. And that's why I put a conditional on the dollars being spent on local artists. If you sit, take a look at the second paragraph of that, they have to provide a list showing that they're spending on local uh, suppliers and local artists uh, in the presentation of these, these, uh, uh, virtual combo, physical events.
Okay, so essentially I could start a society and I could pay myself essentially if I was one of the suppliers or one of the artists. Essentially apply for a grant and pay myself. That would meet the, that would meet the policy.
Well, I would expect that, uh, the list would only contain those who are external to the board itself uh, rather than individuals who may be sitting on that board. So.
I'm not going to belabor it. I think I'm just, you know, Steve is up here. I don't really support funding Zoom events. I mean, I didn't, didn't really have support that last year. I think that there are other organizations that are not in this list, that are not just changing their nature of their event to get grant money. Um, and I, I respect that they don't do that. Um, so I don't support funding events out of property taxes that are held on to them. You know, I think with pretty limited attendance. Um, so, and if they walk down the street or they're having some sort of a gathering, I think that that's also sending the wrong message. Uh, given what's likely happening even later today and the rising case count. So I, I don't support funding Zoom events.
Thank you. Okay, so on one point zero, I don't see any further discussion. Counsel Long, your hand is up for something else. So I will call the question one point zero. All those in favor? And opposed?
I'm opposed.
Counsel, uh, Richter and Counsel Woodward is opposed. That carries. Okay, uh, we move on to one point one. Now, one point one, uh, we're only going to be dealing with the one part of it. And that would be the the Fort Langley Jazz Festival Grant and not the Aldergrove Fair Days Grant. So that's the only one we're dealing with at this, at the, on this particular motion. Counsel Long, did you wish to speak to that one?
No, I, 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 I don't know if I should take my hand down, but it's, it's, it's the legion.
Yeah, if you could, I'll, I'll, we'll move through. We'll take our time and move through. So if you could, that just helps me. Uh, Counsel Richter on the Fort Langley Jazz Festival?
Um, yes, uh, I recall last year that there was a delegation by the festival made to council where it was very evident that, uh, they had obtained significant amounts of federal and provincial COVID funds in order to carry out their event and really making, uh, any kind of contribution from the township redundant. I would like to know if that is the case again this year. Have they received significant federal and/or provincial funding for this event?
So Tullamello, do you have any information on that?
Through, through your worship to Counsel Richter, uh, I did have a discussion with them this morning and asked them whether or not they had confirmation of their funding from the other sources. They did have confirmation of funding from Canadian Heritage, but did not have from their provincial sources. And with respect to the Canadian Heritage Grant, uh, they have been awarded five thousand dollars less than what they received last year. So, uh, there is no, from my understanding, no uh, COVID commitment from the federal government towards these festivals as of yet. That doesn't mean that further funding may not be coming to them later on in the year.
Okay, and so they're, um, funding from the federal, um, program. How much total was that? I seem to recall it was quite significant last year.
Uh, through your worship to Counsel Richter. I, that last year, I believe it was in the neighborhood of seventy thousand dollars. This year it's in the neighborhood of twenty thousand dollars. So it's significantly lower at this stage. And mind you, I don't know if I have that accurate fig, uh, correct. It is what I understood from my conversation earlier today with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. It's, you know, for the discussion. All right. It's, you know, for the discussion on. This one, the Fort Langley Jazz Festival Grant. I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed?
I'm opposed.
Counsel Richter and Counsel Woodward opposed. It carries. So we move on to two point zero. And, uh, this are some amendments to the policy. Uh, so any questions or discussion on two point zero? See any? So I'll call the question. All those in favor of two point zero? And opposed? Uh, and carries. Thank you. We want to two point one. And this is a. Payment of fifty-one to fifty under the twenty twenty-one capital improvements grant. Those funds are distributed to the organization identified in table B. Uh, any questions, discussion on, on, uh, two point one? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. Want to three point zero. Oh, no, we're skipping that one right now. Uh, we go on to. Uh, four point zero. This is a payment of forty-six five thousand under the community grants. Categories distributed to those in organizations, table D.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, point, point of clarification. Three point zero. Is the Fort Langley Community Association. Why would Counselor Long be in conflict on this?
I don't know. Uh, we, we can. We can get to that when we get to that motion. Right now, we're not dealing with it. I've removed it from this motion. So we'll get back to it. Then at that point he can declare. And so we're not discussing three point zero right now. Uh, we'll go back to it. It hasn't, it hasn't been moved. Uh, so, uh, four point zero. Uh, see no discussions.
Oh, yes, I do have a question. So.
Okay, Counsel Richter. Yeah, go ahead.
Your worship, I, I'm not in conflict with three point zero. So I'm not sure where we came up with that one.
Oh, it was on your list. So, sorry.
Well.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll get back to it. That's okay. It'll, it's not been moved. So.
No, it, yeah, item A, D, and E are on my list.
So he's in conflict on this particular item.
Okay, which one?
We're on four. Which is page fourteen. And I see the Alder Grove, uh, Agricultural Fair.
Yeah. So that's right. So I, I am on, I'm in conflict on. On that one part of four.
Okay. So that wasn't clear to me. So, but three, you weren't in conflict.
No.
Okay. So we didn't move that, but we can go. So we go back to that. We'll deal with four. So if you wish to. Declare conflict on a part of four. So I guess gotta find.
Wow.
And which one is that?
Well. No, I'm pretty confused now, but it is anything to do with the Alder Grove. Uh, Agricultural Fair and Festival Association, because my wife is, is a staff member there. The rest of the stuff. There's no, no, no particular interest that I can think of, any of that. So it would be on table A. We've already done that. Oh, that was already done. See, I'm going by tables, not by these items in your other thing there.
My, I don't see table numbers on mine. That's.
I'm item two, table D. I'm in conflict, which is the Christmas light up parade.
Okay. Okay. So. On item four.
Which is community grants.
Community grant. So you want to declare conflict on those, on those two. So if you step out.
Yeah, alright.
On four, and we'll do each one separately. We'll go back to three. That'll, that'll. We'll, we'll deal with four first. Go back. So if you want, so we'll put you in the conflict of interest room. And, okay, so on.
Well, Mr. Mayor, instead of going through each of these individually, why don't we do them all except for the Christmas light up parade? But I had a question.
We'll do that as, as Counsel, uh, Long is out. Now for the light up parade, let's just deal with that one. And then we'll do that one separately. So discussion on the light up parade. Counsel Richter, do you have something on that? On the parade? Okay. So just on that white item, I'll call.
Oh, actually, yeah, I did have a question. Are we going to be able to have parades?
That's usually in Christmas time. So. We don't know. And I, I think that Mr. Tullamello can maybe clarify, but if it doesn't, if the event doesn't happen, the money doesn't flow. So, Mr. Tullamello?
Yes, uh, I believe last year, uh, the society came back with a. Safety plan which spaced a parade out. And therefore qualified for funding on the basis of a reconfigured parade. I think with this one being around Christmas. I think that it is more likely that we'll be able to, uh, see a parade of this nature at that time. Uh, that's just a guess though.
Okay, thank you. So on that one particular item, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. So now we can ask Counsel Long back into the. Meeting, and then we'll deal with the other items under four point zero. Sorry, we're just gonna have to take our time going through this. So.
Yeah. Uh, okay. So I had a question on the Fort Langley Community, uh, Improvement Association, the Christmas tree lighting. Done before for Fort Langley, giving them twenty-five hundred dollars for lighting a Christmas tree?
Mr. Tullamello?
Through your worship to Counsel Richter, uh, typically they apply for funding for support of various events rather than this singular event. Uh, they apply for funding that supports, uh, May Day activities, uh. Uh, activities around Canada Day. So it's, it's a much more broader, uh, range of activities than. Specifically this lighting ceremony. So it, 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 it does still meet. Uh, criteria, uh, and, uh, council has the right to prorate this to a lesser amount, at least on of lesser application.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no other. Discussion. I'll call the question on the balance of item four point zero. All those in favor? And opposed? Carries unanimously. So four point zero is done. Let's go back to three point zero. And, uh, this will have to be moved. It's, uh, it certainly took it out. Uh, so Counsel Davis moves it. Counsel Long seconds it. So three point zero. Uh, this is for the Langley Community Association, Fort Langley Community Association. Uh, any discussion, Counsel Richter?
Yes, I'm, I'm wondering, are they planning to use this to do their survey again? Because. The intent of these thousand dollars were to do events where they could. Bring neighbors together. Through the community association, not surveys.
Mr. Tullamello, uh, the, um, I believe this is operations. So maybe you can describe what that means.
Through, through your worship to Counsel Richter, uh, when the discussion of supporting community associations came forward. It was under the understanding that it could be contributed to their operations. Uh, I believe the community association has, uh, additionally. Two planned surveys, but also. To, uh, participate in whatever events come forward during the year to have a presence there. So. Last year, I believe they spent it on banners. They spent it on their website. They spent it on various activities that they held in the community. But broadly speaking. The criteria was very lax to support, uh, operational funding.
Okay. And so do we have any idea what they're spending it on this year?
Uh, i- if you could hold for one moment, I can pull up the file. Hold on. Uh, s- sorry for the delay. I believe they responded via email when we asked for clarification. I don't have that in the file right now. I could, uh, report, uh, afterwards as to how the funds would be spent. If, uh, uh, Counsel Richter, uh, would be supportive of that later information coming to her.
Yes, that's fine. I think they should be quite clear what they're putting the monies towards. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just have a question for Mr. Tullamello, uh, on that particular grant. Does, does this fall from the conversation we had last year? And, uh, the decision council to provide monies to, um, community associations, uh. Basically for this sort of thing to help their meetings, that kind of thing. But, but, and I recall that and I recall it, us approving. A grant. Category for that.
Your, your worship, that is, that is correct, but it was two years ago that the program launched and.
Time flies.
Yes, that's right. Two thousand and nineteen, actually.
Okay. So we did approve and it's basically to go towards assisting the different community associations and, and their operations. So. It's qualified. Okay, thank you. Counsel Long?
Yeah. So your worship, this is the one that we talked about. And, uh, there are, I think, it, it also in the report, it says there are seven or six or seven communities that. Would qualify, but there's only one that's applied then. So what happened to all these other ones? There was, uh, Willoughby Association and certainly, uh, Alder Grove. Don't know if Brookswood and Murrayville did, but I mean, I guess this is, question is to confirm only. This is the only application we've had under that, uh. That caption, uh, that quite down. Category, is that correct?
Mr. Tullamello?
Through your worship to Counsel Long, uh. Part of the criteria is to report on how the funds are spent. And to provide financials, uh, showing that the funds were spent for the activities of the association. None of the other organizations ever decided to report back to us on how that initial one thousand dollars was spent. So other organizations never ever came back to us, uh, with, with that information. Whereas the Fort Langley Community Association did provide their, uh, annual general meeting, their financial statements. And a concise report on how the dollars are spent. Uh, I do now have the, uh, project description for the Fort Langley application. Uh, they describe it as we want to complete a two thousand and twenty-one Fort Langley community survey. That will be done in more innovative ways than how we saw previous surveys completed. We want to finish our website, which will be more responsible, responsive to the community needs. And to continue to provide a voice to Fort Langley residents and businesses. On issues that come before council. So that's what they put in their application.
Thank you for that. Counsel Richter, your hand is still up. Are you, um?
Yeah, a follow-up question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Um, at, at the time that we put these grants through, the intent, I believe, of council was to support all the different communities. It's sad that we're down to just one community that's using it. So. Uh, I mean, I don't think we should penalize them this year as much as I dislike the idea of spending the money on a survey. Um, but, um. Can we amend the policy just to remove that grant category going forward as it's not being well used?
That could be, um, uh, a separate motion if we wish.
Okay, I'd like to put that separate motion on after we've dealt with this.
Okay, I can tell that. We'll take it to the end there. Okay, thank you. So on three point oh, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And opposed? And then Counsel Woodward is opposed. Carries, with Counsel Woodward opposed. Okay, thank you. Have we done with four? So now we're on to five point zero. And this is ten thousand dollars under the twenty twenty-one major festivals grant. Just want to get up to.
I declare a conflict on half of those.
Okay, so on. Just gonna find it. So that, that would be the, sorry, so I got to speed here.
Oh, oh, wait a minute. Maybe I'm not even in that one. I'm.
There's the Langley Good Times Screws In and it's Langley Board of Clubs charitable foundation.
Okay, I'm okay then. Sorry.
Okay, both those? Okay. Good. So you're in. So on five point zero, any discussion? Call the question. All those in favor?
Five point zero? Yes, I do have a discussion. Yeah, sorry.
Counsel Richter, go ahead.
Why we're even contemplating doing anything for Rib Fest? Like, we don't even know if this is gonna go forward. And, um. I, I just. Good idea this summer. Um, for that reason, I don't think we should be supporting them.
So Mr. Tullamello, again, uh, these events, I know there's planning, uh, various degrees going on. Uh, so there's a five thousand dollars commitment from the township, but if the event doesn't go ahead. Then does that mean that the money doesn't go ahead?
That's correct, your worship. Uh, there is the condition that the event be held within the parameters of the, uh, public health. Uh, provincial health orders. Uh, we would not s- send them funds if those events did not meet those criteria.
Yeah, I know in discussions with, um, the other groups there that they are having to plan, but they are also awaiting, uh, further decisions. And they're, they're all, I think they're all at the point where they, they do have to pull the plug if it doesn't happen. So then they wouldn't get the money. So we're, it's just, I guess preempting it.
So we're preapproving it, assuming that they will go forward, but it's subject to.
That's right. That's right. Okay. Uh, thanks for that clarification. Uh, call the question on five point oh. All those in favor? And opposed? It carries unanimously. And, uh, we move on to six point oh and now Counsel Long, that one was identified.
I would declare conflict on this one. Thank you.
And is that for which the Alder Grove?
Yeah, because it's the only one under that category for the minor festivals. Is that correct on the?
No, there's, uh, oh yeah, five thousand. You're, you're right.
Table E two, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Conflict of interest room. And so six point oh has to be moved. It hasn't been moved yet. Just sure that, then we're gonna divide everything. So if I have a motion on six point zero, Counsel Whitmarsh, seconder. Uh, I have a second. Counsel, uh, Arneson, uh, Counsel Richard on six point zero.
Um, yes. So is this going to be the same principle? Uh, if they can't meet public health standards, it's just not going to go forward? So the monies.
Conditional.
Yeah.
Yes, it's conditional.
It's conditional. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. So we'll ask Counsel Long to come back in. There he is. All right. So now we're on to seven point zero. Counsel approved payment of seventeen thousand five hundred under the twenty twenty-one community grants. Banners category and those funds be distributed to groups identified in table F. Table F is. Question, I've got half my printout is cut off, so I don't get it all, but. Believe that's the, uh, Alder Grove Business Association, Brookswood Merchant and Fort Langley Community Association. Uh, so if I could have a motion, please, or sorry, if I had a discussion, Counsel Woodward on seven point zero.
Yeah, I was just confused by this one, Mr. Mayor. If you look at the table. Um, under the third one for the FLCA, it said criteria met no. An amount recommended forty-five hundred. So if the criteria weren't met, why would we recommend dispersing funds?
Mr. Tullamello, could you explain?
It's, it's a criteria of, uh, financial capacity. That they haven't proven they've met, and that's a diversity of funds that, uh. Uh, support their organization. I felt that in the transfer of the BIA over to the. Uh, community association of the assets in regards to the banners. Uh, that moved automatically with the dissolution of the BIA over to this association. So for this year, I have proposed that we fund the additional. Uh, funds so that we can continue to have banners in the Fort Langley community. But I'm also recommending that we move to a request for expressions of interest. With respect to the banner program in general, so that there's a fair and equitable process moving forward. Determining which community group represents and qualifies for this banner category.
Yeah. So I wanted to clarify that, Mr. Mayor. So in, in that particular case, I think that if there's going to be a protest, these solicit bids. Um, I could, I could put a conflict on that conversation. My counsel have that conversation without me present.
Okay. So we'll separate, uh. The grant of forty-five hundred out and we'll put you in the conflict of interest room. Okay. So we'll just, uh, deal with the Fort Langley Community Association grant application on its own. Uh, any further discussion? I'll call, call Counsel Richter.
Yes, on page eight of the report in the paragraph. Says that staff do not recognize that the MOU.
Okay, I'm sorry. We, we, it's, if you could speak into the mic, yeah, we're just.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, sorry. It says at the bottom of page eight, the last paragraph. That staff do not recognize that the MOU between the two groups is sufficiently transparent. Uh, to officially anoint the Fort Langley Community Association. Um, that concerns me. Um that concerns me and I'm questioning why we would be proceeding with this if there's a lack of transparency.
Mr. Tullamello, perhaps some clarification on that, on that line?
Yeah, yes, your worship, uh to Counselor uh Richter. Uh staff felt that uh we should have been given the heads up. That this transfer of the but the banner program. And the responsibilities for those banners should have come to us for us to notify council. That did not happen. But each society has the ability through their bylaws and constitution. To for self-determination to transfer those those assets according to uh. BC Societies Act. So it was a point of uh concern that township wasn't made aware. Of those transactions ahead of the grant process, and I indicated that in in my report.
So should we be holding off on this until they produce? Um transparent evidence of this transfer of power or responsibility?
So through your worship to Counselor Richter again, uh as the assets, all the existing banners have been transferred. To this organization already, we have no control over them owning it. We would be without banners in our community if we were to take a punitive action with regard to that. Uh uh failure to divulge that 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 transfer.
Okay, so will they correct it? Have we requested them to correct it in years going forward?
The this is uh will be handled through the request for expressions of interest. And a revisiting of the banner policy uh with respect to the grants, I will be bringing that forward shortly. But in the interim, I'm just asking councils uh uh to uh approve this grant. Uh as an interim measurement, a measure until we have gone through that process of reviewing that. That banner program.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so on the one grant of forty-five hundred, I'll call the question, all those in favor? And opposed, carries unanimously, we'll ask Counsel Woodward back in for the other two. Counsel Woodward's back. So now we'll move uh any discussion regarding the other two um banner grants of six thousand and seven thousand dollars. Seeing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, carries unanimously, thank you. Now we move on to eight point zero. And that council approved payment of seventeen thousand from twenty twenty-one's funding allocations. For graduating high school students to be distributed under the twenty twenty-two hundred grand scholarships. Uh I think this is in. In line with previous years, uh any discussion?
So move Ferguson.
That's been moved, so we just need, uh I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, that carries, thank you. Move on to nine point nine point zero and it's a payment of two thousand dollars representing two fifty to each of the eight Langley secondary school applications. From twenty twenty-one's funding allocation for the twenty twenty-two dry grads category as identified in G three. Call the question, all those in favor, opposed and that carries, thank you. Always a worthy cause. And uh even in COVID, I know last year that the grad ceremonies were were difficult, but I know people did what they could and. Certainly, uh hopefully this will be a little bit brighter future uh in June. Uh so now we have ten point zero, one zero point zero, council approved payment of fifteen hundred and ceremony flyby category, and that's for the Remembrance Day Flyby. Call uh Counselor Richter, you have a question on that one?
Yes, I do. Um on page twenty of the report at the very bottom. Uh the grad type says dry grad.
Yeah, I was gonna point that out too.
Why, why does it say dry grad, or is that just a typo?
Sorry, on page?
Twenty, very bottom.
Table H.
Yes, yes, I apologize, I did not catch that.
Oh, that's a.
Then it's just a carry.
So what would, what would that say? Uh that would be the grant type that's?
It it would be, it would be ceremonial flyby grant.
Thanks, so we'll make that correction, thank you.
Sorry.
Good, good catch. Um alright, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, and that carries, thank you. And eleven point zero is council review the applications, not having met grants to be determined by council on table one. Provide funding decisions authorized staff to trust if we need to, so we can re, this would be uh just uh receive it. Or if there's some something that council wishes to discuss, Counselor Long?
Yeah, I actually don't have eleven point zero, but that is exactly what I'd like to talk about. Uh there are a number uh of grants that uh haven't met criteria for various reasons. But I would be concerned uh with the one for the Alder Grove Legion for the Remembrance Day Parade. Um I guess they didn't uh uh if they never received a grant in the past, which is odd, because they've they've had a parade since nineteen sixty-three, I think. Um and uh the staff are recommending perhaps to give them two thousand, but there was a concern about the number of people present. I'm not sure what COVID looked like in November, but I think all of us that have been to a Remembrance Day in Alder Grove know that there's at least five thousand people. That will attend between the congreg- con- congregating around the Senate Taff and along the parade route. So I'd like to move that that be awarded um and and I think they should get the full five thousand, but uh. Council would support that or not, but I'll make that motion.
Okay, oh, and so that's the, I'm just trying to find that one, is it on the list?
So it's it's uh on page twenty-two. Uh and it's a minor festival grant that 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 staff did not approve, and I guess this is what we're looking at now are the ones that were.
Yeah, it's the Alder Grove Legion Remembrance Day Parade, okay? It's a move by Counsel Long, second by Counsel Kunst. Uh so just on that particular one, uh I'll go to Counsel Richter and then.
Well, it wasn't about this particular one, uh Mr. Mayor, I'm I'm wondering why we can't deal with them. It this is. The question that I had is, is this in the realm of the other ones which are preapprovals in the event that they can meet the criteria?
No, this one's.
I believe that should be part of the motion, uh Counsel Long, if you want to put that contingent on that the event takes place.
Well, I I I think that's that's a given, but this one is particularly different because it didn't meet some of the criteria. Uh so staff and because it's new, staff are asking for council to decide. It was rather than staff, so it would be the same category as the other ones.
Okay, so with that, that's, we'll we'll consider that as a just an amendment unless anybody opposes it. To ensure that it's contingent on it on it occurring.
I I think that's obvious, yeah.
Thank you, okay. I don't see any other further hands up on that one, so I'll call the question, all those in favor? And opposed, that carries unanimously, thank you. Anything else from council? Alright, um madam clerk, do we need to do anything with balance of eleven or just receive or just leave it receive? Just to call, that's the last one, I haven't called a question on, so. Just call the question on receive?
Well, your worship.
Just to receive it and.
But your worship, there's some others here, we, I guess they're not gonna be, council's not gonna make a decision on those, this. A number of them.
Somebody brings it up, but otherwise we'll just receive eleven point or the balance of eleven point O. So, so that would be part of the original motion or is it a separate motion, madam clerk? Just just call the question, okay, I'm gonna call the question on the.
Well, your worship, I'd like to move the Fort Langley Lions too. Uh there's no doubt that they've been putting a uh May Day Parade on forever and now they're kind of stuck with uh COVID and it's not too far away. So they won't be able to have, I don't think, a drive-by event or whatever, so they wanted a five hundred dollars to go towards. Doing something on May Day, and I know that there's an explanation here by staff, that you've been very helpful to them and. Um but it's only five hundred dollars that staff are recommending, so I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a secondor? Counsel Woodward seconds it. And uh so on that one, Counsel Richter, do you have any discussion on that one? No, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I think we're gonna be um giving that uh my a larger amount to use um to that festival and I totally think we should be. Uh giving this enough in May Day Parade, so I'll thank Counsel Long for for raising that.
Thank you. Okay, so on that one, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, and that carries unanimously. Are there any others council wishes to bring up? If not, then I will just call the question to receive the balance of them, all those in favor? Opposed, that carries, thank you. And Counsel Richter, um you wish to add a motion, I believe, regarding the uh. Uh community association one thousand dollar grants.
Yes, I do, that uh due to lack of of interest in the grants that this grant category. Uh be removed from the policy going forward.
Is there a secondor? Counsel Wood- uh Woodward seconds, uh. Any discussion, Counsel or Richter, did you wish to speak to it or?
Um no, just to say, uh the intent in my mind was always for these community associations to be able to have. Events in their neighborhoods to connect people with each other and. This isn't happening, so if it starts to happen again, maybe they can bring forward under minor grants or. Community grants of another category, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I um I would rather just leave the category. Um I don't think there's any harm in keeping the category. Um we have one, one community association has applied for it this time, next year might be others, we certainly know the COVID. Years have uh had an impact here on on their activities. The intent, I think, of this thousand dollars was to help with operations, that was the point of it, to help them to operate successfully. So that they didn't have to simply fundraise just to get their operating, uh small operating budget. So I think um I'd rather just leave it, um and in future years we can have more applications, it'll encourage more uh groups to consider it in the future. But uh I don't think we should um get rid of the category simply uh because only one applied for this year.
Thank you, uh Counsel Ferguson?
Yeah, sometimes putting back something back in is more difficult than taking it out, so I, right now I just soon leave it and um we don't use it, that's fine. But uh I just soon keep it there, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Woodward? No? Okay, uh so with that, I'll call the question on Counsel Richter's uh motion, all those in favor? And opposed? So Counsel Aronson, Mayor Froze, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Kunst. Uh Counsel Woodward, Counsel Ferguson are opposed, Counsel Davis opposed, uh motion fails. Okay, so thank you very much, good discussion, everybody, um. Always wanting to help our community organizations and and I really appreciate Mr. Tullamello and staff going through this, this is not an easy task that they have. And I know that they're doing their absolute best to follow council policies and 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 uh previous decisions. To come up with the the best way to um allocate the money that uh we're stewards of for our residents, so. Uh thank you very much for for all the hard work. So now we move on to bylaws for first and second reading. And F one is rezoning application number one zero zero six zero six and development permit application number one zero one one six two. Flat Architecture Incorporated and. One one five one two four five B C Limited. And this is bylaw five six eight eight, could I have a motion for first and second reading?
So move.
Counsel Davis and second by Counsel Whitmarsh, uh Counsel Richter?
Yeah, um there are twenty-four significant trees on this property and none will be retained of. This, given the way they've laid the property out, one would have thought that at least a few could have been retained, so I'm not supporting this. I think that more of an effort has to be made to ma- to retain mature trees in our community, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Artson?
Uh yes, thank you, worship. Uh so if it's, the questions are about forum sighting and character, this is a little out of left field. But I did have a question with respect to the rendering, and when you look at it, it says seventy-two B Avenue. So I'm wondering through your worship to staff if there can be an explanation as to what is the ultimate status of seventy-two B? Because currently it looks like it almost just peters out and it's an effective uh dead end at this point, or at least just. Um a one lane roadway, it's hard to tell from the actual rendering, so. I'm just wondering if staff could please uh explain?
Sure, Mr. Safi?
Thank you.
Thank you, worship, uh just trying to bring up the other slides on the uh the screen for council to take a look at. Uh your worship, in terms of seventy-second B, it will ultimately connect uh further to the east. To, I believe it's uh two or four street, uh that is the uh. Anticipation for from the uh the neighborhood planning perspective, worship, as can be seen on this drawing here. Uh as you can see, the subject site is uh. On the northeast corner of seventy-second and two two A and seventy-two B, which is the road that was referenced. Will ultimately connect to two or four street.
Uh thank you, I appreciate that, and yes, that makes it very clear. I guess my question is, do we have any sense of the timeline for when that roadway might be completed? I know we don't have any control of when the applications come in, but it's just that this uh significant amount of density is gonna be put on the roadway. That's, you know, got other properties waiting to be developed, so I wondered what the process is there.
Uh your worship, the uh the process uh is as council has. I guess been uh been aware of and this is not a unique situation in that sense. Uh and what I mean by that is, and as I'm speaking, I'm trying to bring up another map for council's information, your worship, so forgive me for being a little bit. Uh perhaps not fully focused. Uh we do process applications, your worship, and as you know, the uh the process is for us to. In the, I guess, the efforts of not incurring costs to acquire roadways. As part of development applications, so I wanted to, I wanted to show this map to council just to show. The applications that are ongoing in the area, and as you can see, the applications just go down to, you see the legend. Uh the red outline is a subject, the blue is those that have already received their reading by council. And green is the one that have already been approved past the reading, so as you can see. Uh to the east of the subject site, which is the one here shown in the uh the red boundary. There are two other projects to the east that are currently at third reading, that will be completing uh the laneway fronting that. That portion and the remainder is already underway as well as part of an application that has already been approved by council. So it's imminent, I guess, is is the best way of putting it, at least partially all the way to two or four street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Safi, that's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so no further discussion, I'll call the question on F one, all those in favor? And opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Richter opposed, carries unanimously, thank you. We had three weeks off, I've got to get back in the, back in the groove here. Alright, uh bylaws are first, second, third, and final adoption, and this is G one, the twenty twenty-one local area service tax bylaw, bylaw five six. Nine nine, can I have a motion, please?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna have.
Oh, sorry, I just, hold on, Counsel Woodward?
I gotta declare a conflict on this one.
Okay, thank you.
For obvious reasons, I would think.
Yeah, oh, yes, sorry, I should have caught up on that. Alright, uh discussion, seeing none, I'll call the question on G one, all those in favor? Opposed, carries unanimously, ask Counsel Woodward back in. And there he is, welcome back. Uh bylaws, final adoption, I one is a fire prevention bylaw, bylaw five six nine zero and five seven zero zero. Uh could I have a motion to, please?
Bill move Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson moves, Counsel Davis seconds, Counsel Richter?
Yes, I just wanted to um send my compliments to the uh fire chief for the very excellent annual report. That he provided to us. Uh in the um items distributed, thank you.
Thank you, yes, thank you. I uh arrived at my desk today and I saw this nice big shiny report with a big fire truck on the front of it and started into it, but it's uh. Gonna take some time to read it all, but again, I really appreciate you bringing it up, Counsel Richter, it's a, it's a good report, and so thank you, Chief Campbell. And all of your staff and and uh people that had input into that. Alright, I'll call a question, all those in favor? Opposed, carries, thank you. And move on to correspondence, uh there are five items of correspondence, can I have a motion to receive all five? Kunst moves, Counsel Ri- uh Richter seconds, um discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, and that carries, thank you. And move on to. Uh minutes of committees, uh if we could uh receive the minutes of the council. Counsel Ferguson moves it, second by Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion, call all those in favor? Opposed, that carries unanimously, thank you. And we go to the mayor's report. Good afternoon, everyone, welcome to our virtual meeting. Uh on March twenty-seventh, the Alder Grove Credit Union opened their Willoughby branch, it's their fourth branch in the township and seventh in the lower mainland. It's always exciting to see when a new business opens up to meet the needs of local residents, supply jobs and contribute to our community. The Alder Grove Credit Union has been serving our community for over sixty-five years and it's wonderful to see. And it's wonderful to see, to see them expanding in our Willoughby community. And I I've made a comment to their CEO. It's nice to see businesses expanding. Uh, so many times we hear businesses are struggling and here's one that's uh, looking to expand in our community. So I really appreciated that uh, from the board of directors and their staff. On April ninth, uh, the world lost a truly incredible monarch. Prince Philip, Duke of Edinburgh, passed away. His dedication to duty, his love of the outdoors, his philanthropy are to be admired. He'll be truly missed. And on behalf of Township of Langley, I extend our, our deepest condolences to the family uh, during this difficult time. And as you've noted, uh, around the township flags, uh, we're flying at half mast. Also, on April the ninth, uh, MLA's uh, Megan Dykman and Andrew Mercer, Mercy, along with Jason Cook, the executive director of the Langley Memorial Hospital, and Heather Scott, the executive director of the Langley Memorial Hospital Foundation, announced the construction of the expanded emergency department at the Langley Memorial Hospital is complete. The emergency department now includes eighteen additional treatment bays, two trauma bays, a separate pediatric waiting area for children, an additional entrance dedicated solely to the ambulances, and a separate treatment area for patients with mental health and substance use needs. We're so pleased that the expansion is complete, and we're grateful to the provincial government for ensuring our residents receive the best possible care. Uh, long awaited and a lot of work went into it. And now a lot of people in our community have contributed to this, uh, and I really want to thank the hospital, Fraser Health, and the, and the hospital foundation for all of their, their uh, efforts in bringing this much-needed emergency department to our community. So council was busy over the last few weeks. On April the first, council long attended the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce's ninetieth anniversary event. Congratulations and thank you to the chamber for ninety years of helping Langley businesses prosper. Uh, and Counsel Whitmarsh and Ferguson attended the Glen Valley Dyking District at Virtual AGM on April ninth, where the financial reporting budget were discussed and trustee elections were held. Also, on April the seventh, Counsel Richter attended the Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce's webinar, Mindset Over Matter. This was a very informative and enthusiastic educational session focused on three pivotal shifts in mindset needed to stay present, focused, and empowered in order to grow and thrive despite change. And I, I really uh, like reading these. And maybe Counsel Richter can comment, but um, it's choose your emotional tone, remain calm and not panicked. Number two is learn to eliminate worry. Worry gives into fear. And number three, commit to success. Search for solutions, not escape. So and I thought those are words to live by, uh, especially in these difficult times. Uh, attended several meetings, uh, Langley Healthy Communities Partnership, uh, and on March twenty-third, on March twenty-fifth, the Municipal Finance Authority held their uh, annual AGM. And uh, the uh, trustees were appointed and elected, and I'm happy to say that I've remained on the uh, on the uh, Municipal Finance Authority as one of the ten trustees representing uh, British Columbia, representing, representing Metro Vancouver. There's four appointed for Metro Vancouver. And uh, and that uh, Mayor Brody was re-elected as uh, chairperson. And uh, and so we want to congratulate him and and all the good work that MFA does for municipalities, for hospital authorities, and school, school boards throughout British Columbia. Uh, Translink um, held the board meeting and also held the budget workshop last little while and and looking ahead, uh, sorry, Metro Board. Metro uh, had a budget workshop. And Metro, of course, has to have their numbers out early, so municipalities can then incorporate those numbers into their budgets. So uh, the work has already begun. And I know Counsel Richter and I attended that. And Translink had a mayor's council meeting and board and the uh, board meeting, uh, public board meeting in the last little while. And Counsel Richter also attended the Metro Board, Metro Regional Parks, and Metro Board Budget Workshop. So that's my report, and I'll turn to Counsel Richter some comments.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to draw council's attention to the four metro reports that um, uh, the township clerk included in our items distributed on April eighth. Uh, one is the liquid waste heat recovery report. Uh, the second one is the tier-three cost apportionment report. Both of these were approved by the board. The third one is the social equity report, and the fourth one is the draft policy language report uh, going forward on uh, the twenty fifty uh, new strategic plan. And I want to bring these to council's attention because these um, documents are outlining a, a shift in how Metro will be doing business going forward. When we look at the liquid waste, the heat recovery plants, um, basically all of Metro will be financing this, even though uh, the GVS and DD uh, district that it's located in will be the district to benefit from any of the outflow of uh, of these um, uh, heat recovery facilities. Also, on the tier-three cost apportionment, that tier-three means everybody in all four districts will be picking up the costs. And certainly with the social equity and the draft policy language around uh, the twenty fifty plan, um, it's important that uh, we recognize what the potential financial impacts of this could be to all the member municipalities going forward. So there is a council of council meetings coming up on March the eighth, or May the eighth, sorry. And I'm hopeful that council will take time to digest these reports, and if you have any questions to take it directly to the horse's mouth, so to speak, at the council of council meeting on May the eighth. With regards to the budget going forward, as the mayor indicated, we did have a budget session. It was quite clear that the major driving force uh, behind the budget and its costs are the um, liquid waste facilities, and there are three major projects underway right now, North Shore, uh, Northwest Langley, and also the Iona Plant. The North Shore uh, people have requested that we look at a thirty-year amortization period for their project going forward, rather than a fifteen-year amortization program in order to level out the tax impact on their residents. I requested that it be done for all three of the major plants, and so a report will be coming back to Metro Vancouver on the financial implications of that. What concerns me uh, of uh, greatly is that by twenty twenty-five, um, the Fraser Sewage District that we're part of will be looking at a sixteen percent cost increase uh, due to the actual construction that will be going on for the Northwest Plant. So like I say, financial implications that will um, impact our taxpayers going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, thanks for that update. Uh, Counsel Ferguson?
Uh, yes, thank you. As uh, I wanted to either ask uh, Mayor Froze or Counsel Richter. As a member of the Liquid Waste Committee, we've gone over a lot of these particular uh, uh, things uh, over the years. Uh, there was a uh, a timeline which was proposed. I'm not sure if, you could certainly see an awful lot of things at the board level, whether staff, wherever will explain that if they were, if the motion was to pass, that the timeline would be uh, interchangeable. In other words, it'd be, it could be longer or shorter depending on uh, what the board decided. And I was just wondering if uh, Counsel Richter or Mayor Froze can uh, comment on that?
So, so you're talking about the amortization period, or are you talking about?
Well, one, there's two things. One is amortization and the other one is the acceptance by all four regions uh, by either uh, timelines or when it would be actually begin.
Yeah, so the uh, amortization period, there's a big discussion last year uh, by the board to move it um, to a lengthier, lengthier amortization period, and the board had a discussion and basically committed to staying to the fifteen year. However, now the North Shore are looking at thirty for their um, for theirs, and uh, there, and because the sewage and drainage districts are separated into four quadrants, if, if the North Shore wants to go with it, it may be that that, that'll be a change. As Counsel Richter stated, that uh, the requests have been made again for some of these other big projects, but not every project that that Metro does. So we're looking specifically at the uh, at the major wastewater treatment plants. So as far as construction, a lot of the um, what driving forces behind these major projects are other government regulations that uh, that Metro has to uh, has to adhere to and also plan for the growth that's coming. And so the they have to look ahead and and build these, and if they don't start now, uh, we're too late. So as far as construction, I don't know if there's a lot of room. I know they've looked at everything they possibly can do to, to uh, change the, the timing on these to help alleviate the costs, but there's some that are just out of our control. Uh, one of them is federal government regulations on, on the uh, the effluent that leaves these plants, uh, tertiary treatment, uh, making sure that it's uh, that it's clean and safe for the environment, uh, or regulations that are coming down. And also the fact that we're growing as a, as a Metro Vancouver in that capacity has to be there in the future. We can't wait for it. And there's a lot of aging. It's this, this is a very, it's been around a long time that drainage district, as you know. And uh, there's a lot of aging infrastructure that needs to be looked at. So I know they looked at, they're looking very carefully how they can uh, delay, but there's not a lot of opportunities for that just based on the fact that we're growing region and some of this infrastructure is quite old and not up to new standards. So I don't know if Counsel Richter, you can add anything to that?
Um, yeah, the uh, these major projects are the key cost drivers, and the metro staff have acknowledged that. And if we just look at what happened with the North Shore, it started out as a seven hundred and seventy-three million dollar project. It's now up to one point one billion. So the cost implications are quite significant. And if you extend the amortization period, it levels it out more, uh, so that um, uh, the costs are borne over a longer period of time. Uh, there are parts of the board that are quite concerned about the debt load that um, Metro would be taking on and to get rid of that debt load as quickly as possible, hence the focus on the fifteen years. But in the case of these larger projects, it may make sense to look at a longer thirty-year period. And certainly, as I say, like I quoted the numbers from twenty twenty-five for us in the Fraser Sewage District. We're going to be paying sixteen percent more by that year for the sewer projects that are in our area. Uh, at the same time, North Shore is only going to be paying about nine percent more. So there seems to me to be a bit of an inequity. Why should that one area get um, their curve flattened and not the other areas? So that was the logic behind it. Thank you.
Okay, I do appreciate it. And for council's information, there's um, you know, a number of projects going, including uh, in Langley, Northwest Langley uh, uh, liquid waste plant, which is in uh, under construction right now for an improvement, it's an expansion. Uh, of course, Anisus Island is going through an expansion as well. And uh, you've just mentioned, uh, North Vancouver is building a brand-new plant. And um, it's a very complicated plant, um, with a, I guess, it's an elevation to one on top of the other because of the land base. And of course, Iona Island, which is Richmond. So there's a number of major projects going on in in Metro Vancouver, liquid waste, sewer drainage, what they call that, uh, GVS and DD. So that's uh, that's why I wanted to comment. And I'm glad that both yourself, Mr. Mayor, and Counsel Richter brought it to everybody's attention because it is a, an awful lot of money. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah.
Mister Mayor, yes, I, I just wanted to add um, one more thing, which I forgot to highlight in my report. And that is uh, the, I, I believe the metro staff are doing the very best that they can to try to reduce the tax load on the member municipalities from these big mega projects. And on the water side, one of the big mega projects that's on the books um, is the expansion of the Coquitlam Reservoir. And they are proposing now that if we can control our water usage, particularly during drought years by banning, completely banning the watering of lawns. Um, this could put off our need to have to build uh, a major water uh, reservoir project uh, for a bit longer. So in order for us to get through, say, building all these liquid waste facilities and then dealing with the water facilities. So it's quite likely that a recommendation will be coming forward to the member municipalities that they all agree um, to endorse and enforce the complete banning of um, wa- lawn watering during drought years. And the last drought year that we had was twenty fifteen. I think this is a, a small move that we could make uh, to put a big cost off. So I'm, I'm supportive of it, and I hope rest of council will think about it as well.
Thank you. Thank you. I remember that. I think uh, it was almost an embarrassment to have a green lawn during that time, because then it meant you were watering it. So it was uh, quite, quite serious. People were very concerned about the water during that last drought. And uh, and that was an, that was a time period where we just didn't have the rains to replenish the reservoirs. If we get the rains, then it's okay. But if we don't, uh, certainly those bans will come in effect. All right, uh, so we'll move on now to other business, and uh, I have a notice of motion uh, on your agenda. Uh, I'll dispense with the whereas, it's basically, um, you know, from listening to uh, some members of council during some of the conversations we've had over some uh, development permits and that sort of thing. And I believe it's time where with, are getting familiar with virtual platforms for uh, having meetings and and engagement. Uh, I know Counsel Richter mentioned she'd been to one that was virtual, was held, that was was, she thought was quite successful. I asked staff if we could uh, prepare something that would put these back in uh, during the COVID period in a, in a manner that would be appropriate. So the motion I'll read is uh, therefore be resolved that council directs staff to prepare an amendment for the development-held public information meetings during the COVID nineteen pandemic in relation with development applications pursuant to policy zero seven dash one six four. Prior to such applications advancing to council effective immediately, based on a virtual format using generally accepted platforms. Uh, so move.
I will second that, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Richter seconds it. Uh, Counsel Richter, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, and I want to thank you very much for bringing this forward. I, I think it can be done, and I think it can be done very effectively, having uh, sat through the Orion Construction Presentation uh, recently um, uh, in Surrey. So um, thank you for bringing this forward. I think we should get back to doing this.
Thank you. All right, I will call a question. All those in favor? And opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank um, Mr. Seffy for helping me with the wording in this, because I know it's important to him too. Uh, so now a motion to move uh, into uh, resolve with a special closed meeting for, for the items on the agenda and on table.
Mayor, what about other business?
Oh, sorry. I got so excited that I got something passed. I forgot. Is there any other business?
Yes, please. Okay, um, I'd like to put forward a notice of motion that we amend the proclamation policy uh, to include lighting of buildings or other public infrastructure, and I'll send that forward for our next meeting.
Okay.
I'd also like to um, congratulate uh, the LEC staff and the Langley um, Event Center, or the Langley Event Center staff and the Fraser Health Authority. I had the, the privilege of being able to get um, my first vaccine dose on Friday, and it was incredibly well organized, well-done, very caring environment, a kudos all the way around. So I um, hope that the rest of council will be able to get theirs shortly as well.
Great. If I, if I could, if I could just interject there, uh, when you registered, did you have to put Langley Township to find Langley Event Center?
Yeah, when, when you do it, but um, we were, there was some technical difficulties with the website at that point, so we ended up calling.
Okay.
They just directed us to the event center, yeah.
So I, I found, I registered, I'm getting mine on Thursday. I registered where if you put Langley in, it directs you to Quantlin, uh, to the university. If you put Langley Township in, it directs you to Langley Event Center. So I've asked our staff to go through the process to see when you put Langley in, both will pop up, so it'll avoid that confusion. But I, I appreciate uh, you bringing that up. Thanks. Okay, I'm sorry, I interrupted. You carry on.
Yeah, the um, the third item I wanted to bring up is with regards to the municipal athletic track, municipal athletic park track. And I believe all of council got an email uh, from um, a young family that's just recently moved to Langley in the Murrayville area uh, querying why we close the track at four o'clock. Uh, that that's not very accessible for them, because they don't get home from work until after uh, four o'clock. And also on the weekends. So I'm wondering if um, uh, staff could look into this, about the feasibility of opening the track now that the nice weather is coming perhaps to six o'clock or seven o'clock as well as on weekends.
Mr. Backen?
Uh, thank you, Worship. We can supply a memo, but the, the rationale is the track isn't closed. It's actually being used by the user groups. So um, uh, giving, giving an example, I think the track is open most days because there's no user groups booking the fields. But you're seeing that the artificial turf field is quite popular there from four until nine or so, and their our practice has been not to allow crossover with the general public with the user groups, in effect, keeping people in their cohorts. So we can follow up to see if there's any gaps in the schedule, say, between four and nine, and, and report back to council as to the um, I guess, the uh, the usage and uh, see if there's any chance of trying to get some evening availability, but it'll depend very much upon the user group's utilization of the facility.
Okay, thank you. And um, Okay, thank you. And um Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to go back to one of the letters that we received today with regards to the request to waive DCC charges on a property that was a strata property and then got um de-stratified or a single, a single title or fee simple title. And I'm just wondering, why would they have to pay development cost charges for that? Because they're they're paying more taxes as their fee simple now. I it mean, is there a logical reason to to require them to pay DCCs?
I'll ask staff. I believe there may be some legislation involved. Um, Mr. Backen.
Actually, Mr. Seffi, I think you've uh done the workup on this. Are you there?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I've got two hands up to ignore that, sorry. Thank you for the opportunity, your worship and Mr. Backen. The uh I guess the legislation allows municipalities to collect DCCs at time of subdivision. And this particular case, uh staff is quite familiar with the applicant and and their their request for reconsideration. Uh the fact is that there are no provisions in local government act that would allow either staff or council for that matter without the adoption of the bylaw to waive or or somehow relax the DCCs that are payable at time of subdivision. Uh I guess the uh the argument that may have been put forward is the fact that you know, creating a lot line around an existing building does not impose a burden. The fact is that DCCs have not been paid on that particular lot and and it should have been paid at some point in the past. So uh you know, from a technical perspective, from a legal perspective, there's really no grounds for for relaxation of DCCs.
Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, and um also, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to thank you very much for the letter you sent to Surrey Council with regards to maintaining the uh buffer on one ninety-sixth street. And this was item number two on the April first items distributed. And uh I was wondering if perhaps um there needs to be like a follow-up phone call uh from you to Mayor Callum, if you've heard back from him at all. And uh further down on that same items distributed list, there was a a letter sent to us from Jeanette Paisley. And I was wondering if um staff could send her a copy of the letter that you've sent to uh Surrey Council or response.
Yeah, I think that's that should be appropriate. Yeah, uh they make, made a note, will send a copy. Yes, thank you. And I'll I'll do a follow-up phone call.
All right. And um now, item number twenty on the items distributed on April eighth was a request regarding um putting a trail over the Trans Mountain Pipeline that's going through the Redwoods Golf Course. And uh ta- page two fifty-two indicates that there's no funding. So I was wondering if staff could get back to us on the cost to fund this and uh so that we could forward that to budget twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Backen.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson.
Oh, yeah, I um wanted a quick, a quick question. I uh Langley Memorial under, I guess, correspondence. They they had that grant request and they're saying that um some of the portion of the parking lot is not is there any way you could give us a kind of a cold snow version of what that means?
Yes, uh, Mr. Backen.
Uh thank you, worship. This this uh issue revolves around the, I guess, the the threshold by which um there would be exemptions from property tax. Um last uh budget cycle, council actually gave direction that once properties exceeded a certain value, uh they would then be facing tax and that the value was significantly very high. I don't recall exactly what it was, but it was in the millions of dollars. Um and the last year, they just fell under it with the change in escalating real estate prices. They just went above it. Uh their uh their exemption portion remains in the tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um but it remains at this point that there would be a balance due of the thirteen thousand dollars. Uh to date, there's only a couple of properties that reach or exceed that threshold, uh one being Murrayville and one being in Brookswood.
So if I may, just a supplemental, is there anything we can do to help them out?
Uh well, council could always change the policy, but of course, because getting effects on other parties that maybe using it, the rationale was that after a certain period of time and a certain value, that would be appropriate for there to be taxed because effectively it becomes a an element of landholding or land banking and it would be much easier if the property was actually put into some form of use.
Okay, that makes, okay. And my next question, if I may, through a chair to Mr. Mayor, is that um you know, some people, uh we're still getting letters, not that many, were requests or whatever the right comments from folks uh saying, asking to have DCC uh waived or or looked, relooked at on, as we, as we all know, I think it was March twenty-third, they, the new increases came into play. If I'm, so my question to staff is, um either Mr. Backen or Mr. Seffi, uh we have made that decision. Is there anything that can be done or that decision to be made? And that's my question.
Your worship, I I guess the answer is can anything be done after the deadline? It's very much the same answer as Mr. Seffi gave in regards to uh parties that we wish to vary historically. Uh it would mean uh amending or replacing the existing DCC bylaw, meaning the various approvals processes with the ministry and again, another grace period. So uh in theory, council can always do something else, but it would be a major departure uh from the position we've taken because as you may recall, we did have the one-year grace period uh from the adoption of the bylaw by which parties would be grandfathered if their applications got to a certain stage. So while it's challenging, um I think the suggestion would be that we stay the course at this point simply because of the the investment that we've made in the process, the ministry approvals, the they're revamping of the program and the timeline we put in place.
So I think the important thing to note is it has gone to the ministry, is being approved by the ministry. Council's voted on it. It'd be very, very difficult to start making changes at this point in time. Is that correct?
That's correct, your worship. It would mean amending the bylaw and going through the process again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Long.
Thanks. On those two items too, I just wanted to be crystal clear on J one. So what Mr. Seffi has said is that we are not able to waive that because my understanding from the proponents was that if they may may request a council, the council could waive it. And that's why it's the, I think that's obviously why the letter is here, requesting council do that. But I just want to be very clear that we are not able to.
Mr. Backen. Uh your worship, I think the confusion rests with the word waive. Um it cannot be waived, that that's certain. Council could amend the bylaw scheme, uh just like this Council Ferguson has to be the same process. So if council wanted to create the exemption um for this property or class of properties, the process would be, we would introduce the amendment, uh we would go to the ministry, seek their approval. Upon receiving the approval, uh we would then come back and and a bylaw could be adopted. Now, remember, we we can't do it on the basis of a single property. It's going to be on a class or set of properties. And we'd have to analyze the financial consequences to doing so throughout the the community because it's a it's a bylaw that has two components. It's overall of the community and then it's actually the program itself that's to be funded from the DCC program that affects the community. So waiving is perhaps an outright term, but it could be amended. Council always has the inherent jurisdiction to change the policy and to uh to create grander exceptions or broader exceptions and as well to uh to reduce maybe the size of the program in terms of some of the needs that we see.
Okay, well, I guess that that does say no to me. On J two, um the explanation is that their property may have been uh improperly assessed. So they're going to be taking it up with B C assessment. Will there be a chance that they could get that money back in the future time? Because it it seems that the if 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 it's only allowed to be a parking lot, we're talking about Langley Memorial Hospital parking lot here. Can't very well develop it. So it's not really uh, the land value would not be the same, would it? So I I think that uh she makes a point, uh Miss Scott in her letter, that uh they they should have fought that with B C assessment, but didn't get around to it. Um so how can we help these folks out? Because they didn't get any revenue from parking. Uh so this thirteen thousand dollar is going to be a hit on the hospital foundations. Any suggestions?
Your worship, we we certainly recognize the the uh significant contribution that the hospital foundation makes and what's taking place in terms of their the properties. Um the only practical way, I think, to deal with it would be to uh allocate some sort of grant funding to them uh that would be the equivalent of the taxes payable. Uh I think you're right. I think if the question is evaluation, if it's improperly valued, um there would be an appeal process to B C assessment. I I'm not sure if they can still take advantage of that this year. It may be um more timely to do so next year. I I think they should be encouraged to do it this year if there's time. And if not, they certainly should be proceeding next year because I suspect the property values will increase. And in the interim, then council's real only practical, I think, solution would be to provide some level of a uh funding uh from council contingency or or any surplus funds from the grant program to uh to effectively cover the uh the thirteen thousand dollars.
So may I ask then, follow up then, your worship, is there any surplus in the grant uh program that we could allot to this? And does anybody else on council want to support that?
Uh so your worship, it's the first question. I think Mr. Talent, Tilla Mello indicated in his uh overall grant package that there was the amount subscribed and the amount available. Mr. Tilla Mello, uh overall, I believe there'd be about thirteen thousand, or there'd be more than thirteen thousand. Are you out there somewhere?
Perhaps um.
Oh, well, Mr. Tilla Mello comes online, your worship, we can uh, he may be looking something up. The uh uh I guess the the other component would be in terms of this council wish to explore that because if it's not from the grant program, I'm certain there's other funding such as council contingency or a combination there too that could be utilized. Uh but I guess we'll come to counsel along. Second question is, what's the will of council?
So it it could be um referred back to staff to come back with a reporter memo on on some options and and.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. And I'm just curious if 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 they were successful with their appeal, would that be retroactive in any way?
Yeah, Mr. Tilla Mello is up, is available. Uh, Mr. Tilla Mello.
Yes, uh there there are uh sufficient funds uh that have been left unspent in the community grants program that could fund that that particular uh initiative.
So I'll make the motion, but also that staff would uh, well, no, I'll just make that motion that we would
So.
Make, give the thirteen grand out of that.
Okay, so moved and Council could second it. So on that motion. Uh, Council Richter, your hand is up from before. Let's start on the motion.
Yeah, it it I I'm trying to understand this. So we put a limit in and they're thirteen grand over the limit. So they want us to break our our own limit? Is that what's going on here? Because why would we even bother to have a limit if we're going to break it?
So what we could do is to get all that information to councils, perhaps refer this motion to staff to Mr. Backen has some comments. Mr. Backen, can you?
Yeah, well, uh the letter claimed that they made a mistake in the assessment, so they wouldn't have been over the limit if they'd uh if if the assessment was correct, I guess.
Mr. Backen. Yeah, thank you, worship. Uh perhaps to clarify and and perhaps to get to the the root of the issue and perhaps avoid the referral. Um the issue is really as to the total assessed value of the property. There's a bit of a formula that goes into play. And the determination was that once a property uh reached a certain threshold limit, any assessed value above that threshold limit uh would then be taxable. Uh so as an illustration, I don't believe these numbers are quite accurate, but it just may help in understanding the issue. If the threshold was, say, ten million dollars, uh all taxes on the ten million dollars from the township's point of view would be waived. But if the property, say, came in at ten million, five hundred thousand dollars, that five hundred thousand dollars would therefore be a taxable property value. That one multiplied by the mill rate would lead to a tax. And in this circumstance, um there was examples, maybe not the actual numbers, but those examples are of what's occurred. Uh so that's left a residual tax bill of of the of the thirteen thousand dollars. As Counselor Long has pointed out, there's a suggestion that the assessment was wrong. It should not have been a bill that should not have been assessed at uh ten million. In my example, ten million, five hundred thousand dollars, but it's something less than ten million dollars, so such that it would be non-taxable. Um that's their 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 position and that's something that uh can go to B C assessment. I'm not certain if the uh if the timeline is not passed for uh appeals to B C assessment. Uh if not, they can pursue that. And if it has passed, then they'd be having to pay the taxes this year and and perhaps addressing that next year. If the uh if the are able to appeal, if there's still time limit, and I think that that's probably unlikely given the time of year we're in, but if that was the case, then yes, it could affect their tax bill this year. Um but uh the rules are usually authenticated earlier in the year, but with the timeframe we have now, it uh there is some opportunity. And so what they're saying then is um perhaps because of error in the assessment authority, um that they are seeking relief from the taxes payable over the threshold. And the only practical option at this date would be for council to uh to fund that, perhaps through a grant. And as Mr. Tilla Mello says, if that's council's desire, there is the uh, there is that amount of money remaining in the grant program that could be utilized.
Okay, but the motion that we're being asked to vote on right now is to give them a grant of the thirteen thousand dollars, which, once we do it for this group, how many other groups are we going to have to do this for? Like, we had a limit. Why do we have a limit if we're not going to live by the limit?
So just just, it's a good, good point. We we just want to get this back to discuss. So there are a couple of things that can happen. We can vote on this as it is and we either vote for it or or vote it down. Knowing that there's a limit, they've gone past it. We can do it as a amend it to do as a one-time only uh based on uh if if they are not successful in their in their um appeal, or if there's too late for the appeal and that next year it wouldn't apply if they go through the proper steps. Or, you know, like I say, just vote it down or vote for it. So uh, Mr. Backen, do you have any on on those, you know, if we want to do it as a one-time, just want to make sure that it, as Council Richter uh pointed out, we don't want to set precedent. We have a policy in place. This has gone over. Is there a way we can do it? We don't set precedent.
No, I think you summarized it well, your worship. The the process, I think, as I'm hearing, is that council would be entertaining uh this grant at this time if no appeal is available um and only because of the the uh suggestion of a B C assessment uh uh clarification, that it would affect be a one-time situation and that if uh after whatever processes take place next year, there's still a a uh surplus owing or a sorry, a amount owing toward taxes, that'd be the responsibility of the uh of the organization.
So so that amendment might make it more palatable.
Well, I'll make the mo- motion with that. But can I, can I add a point too? I mean, there is a COVID year that they have not been able to charge for parking. So there's a huge
So.
Uh they're put in that position by the province, right? And by the pandemic.
So if you want to move that amendment, then then uh we can.
Well, I I think the original motion, but I'll add the words one time.
One time.
Because the deadline has passed. The deadline has passed, so they can't appeal it.
Okay, is there a second or to that amendment? Counsel Davis seconds it. It's on the amendment. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Richter is opposed. It carries. So the motion as amended, all those in favor? Opposed? Counsel Richter is opposed. It carries. Thank you. So it's clear. It's a one-time. Is there any other business? All right.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, sorry. More, um uh in, on April first, um we got uh items distributed, number seven on page twenty-one, which concerned uh the idea of putting a speed sign on forty-four A Avenue. Uh now, the report doesn't seem to indicate that there's any reason why we can't do it. So do I need to put a notice of motion forward that a fifty kilometer per hour sign be posted on forty-four A Avenue?
Yes.
Okay, I will make that notice of motion for the next meeting then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify? Um it says so, Counsel Richter. It says here, based on the above, staff will arrange for the installation of a fifty kilometer speed sign on Forty-four Avenue, east of Two Sixteenth Street and relocation of the no exit sign closer to two eighteen. So I, there is some action on that. Like in the, in the.
Yeah, but it's, it's going on forty-four, not forty-four A. Forty-four A is where they want it.
Oh. Uh you know, I wonder if that's a typo error because I, that's what we asked for.
So perhaps the notice motion come and there'll be some clarification for next, next meeting.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, good, good idea. I thought, I thought it was, uh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. So any other business? All right, uh, motion to resolve the special closed meeting for items on the agenda and on table. Have a motion, please. Counsel Whitmarsh.
I have a question. I have one.
I have a second, I have a second, uh Counsel Davis. So I have uh two items I'll be putting on. One's personnel and one's personnel. And so those two items and Counsel Ferguson, you had something to put on.
Yeah, well, I guess one is consideration and the other one is personnel.
And I have a personnel item too, please.
Okay, thank you. So without a call, the question, all those in favor, opposed, uh carries. So we will um go into closed, uh take a ten-minute break or so, a little bit over, come back at uh three twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. The same channel, right?
Same channel.
Okay.
Thank you.